Good evening and welcome to Latrobe City Council's council meeting which is being held at the Gipsland Performing Arts Centre in Trelgany tonight. Tonight's meeting is being held with councillors and guests joining us in person and virtually. So it gives me great pleasure to welcome virtually Deputy Mayor, councillor Sharon Gibson, councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley and councillor Campbell who are all joining us in person. We also welcome our CEO, Mr Stephen Piersanti, and our executive team. I'd now move to the recognition of the traditional owners and I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting here today on the traditional land of the Brakalong people, of the Gunai Kernai Nation, and I pay my respects to their elders past and present. If there are any other elders present, I'd also like to acknowledge them. Moving on to some housekeeping matters, we conduct our council meetings under the government's rules currently in place. We welcome all members of the public attending, both via the live stream and in person, and I thank you for respecting the protocols of the meeting which ensure that we can extend the appropriate courtesy and respect throughout our meeting tonight. If councillors could ensure they raise their hand if they wish to speak, so I can see it, speak directly into the microphone to ensure that they can be heard within the room and via the live stream, and when voting, raise their hands and leave their hands raised until I've called their names. We'll now move on, there's no apologies. Councillors, do we have any requests for leaves of absence? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to item number three, which is adoption of the minutes. Councillors, do I have a mover to adopt the minutes of the meeting commencing on page four of tonight's agenda? Yep, I've got councillor Pugsley moving, councillor Gibson seconding. Any opposition? The councillors will put that to the vote, all those in favour. Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor... Sorry. Councillor Lund, sorry. I was looking at councillor Howe's name and I'm thinking that's not councillor Howe. Councillor Howe, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare that motion carried. My apologies councillor Lund, I just mental blank looking at councillor Howe's name and... All right, thank you councillors, that's moved. We move on now to declarations of interest. Councillors, do we have any declarations? Councillor Campbell?
Mine's in the confidential agenda, do you...
Yep, what item number and... Yep. Oh, 15.1. Could you just put your microphone on please councillor Campbell, sorry.
I haven't got that on my agenda.
Item 15.1 is the...
15.1, I haven't got it, yeah, okay, 15.1.
Kosiosko Street?
Yep.
Yep, and what sort of conflict?
Material.
Material conflict, thank you for that. Councillor Pugsley?
My conflict of interest relates to item 7.1 on the agenda.
Yep.
It's a material conflict of interest that I have previously provided in writing to the CEO.
Nice, thank you for that councillor Pugsley. Councillors, any other conflicts of interest? Ah, councillor Gibson, yep, sorry.
No worries, I cannot see the room, I cannot see the councillors.
Okay, we'll hold the meeting right there because a councillor has to be able to see the entire room and hear all everything?
I can see but it's in the distance.
All right, we'll get our IT guys to get on to that. For the members of the gallery, we cannot conduct a meeting unless a councillor can hear and see all other councillors, so we'll just put a hold on the meeting until we can rectify that problem.
Is councillor Gibson's problem because it looks very light on the monitor and that might be why she can't see?
No, she just can't, no, she's shaking her head, she just can't see everybody.
I can see you but it's as if you're little ants, you're a long way away.
All right, we'll get our IT team to fix that up for you councillor Gibson.
That would be lovely, thank you.
If you could let us know when we're bigger than ants and they can actually distinguish the councillors, that'd be great.
Supposedly we've got a way forward. When a councillor speaks, it'll zero in on them.
Okay, so you can see the room and you'll be able to pick up if a councillor's speaking, all right? Thank you, thank you to our IT gurus for that. We've done declarations of interest, we've done our minutes. Councillors, are there any acknowledgements that would like to be made tonight? Yep, councillor Potter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I have three, if that's okay.
State is fine councillor Potter.
It's been busy times. First of all, I just want to say I had a fantastic time at the 22nd Balarra Folk Festival and it was a pleasure to open the event alongside yourself councillor Harriman, following the impressive Balarra Primary School drummers who kicked things off in style, marching through the streets and gathering up everybody to take them to the main stage. The stage was buzzing with great music all day, the Streslicki Stringbusters were a crowd favourite, busking under the trees. The market was really busy and it was great to catch up with so many locals and also people from out of the region and out of the town. The markets, the conversations and the joy that was just there, people dancing, just sitting around with family and friends, it was absolutely fantastic. So I just want to send out a thank you to the organisers, led by Rick Tenneyshay, the volunteers, the performers and everyone who came along and made it such a special day. So good on Balarra, they did it again for the 22nd time. The other one was, the Yunnar has really embraced the sculptor culture with the permanent sculptures lining the main street, setting a scene for really fabulous and ever-growing arts community that's happening in Yunnar. And a vision that started by Nicole Allen has really flourished into a nationally recognised biannual event, attracting sculptors from all over Australia. One gentleman I was talking to had brought his sculpture down across from Perth and next time he's planning to bring a great big one, that will take a couple of trailers to get here. So you know, people are really embracing the whole concept and coming along. So this year there was over 100 applications and the very best of those are now on display in Yunnar. From steel and stone and wood and ceramics to tiles and glass, each of them is absolutely different and absolutely brilliant. So, once again, like to thank the hardworking organising committee and the volunteers who have made this exhibition so passionate. And it's really hard to get a car parked in Yunnar at the moment because people are just there wandering up and down the streets looking at the artwork that's out in the street. And because it's in the street, it doesn't have a closing time, so people are there sort of late in the afternoon still looking, so very, very wonderful. So thank you to those organisers and volunteers who have been running that. And my last one is, I would like to acknowledge Class Act for their very successful and very entertaining production of Little Shop of Horrors that was finishing their season yesterday here at GPAC. My husband and I went along on Saturday night and it was really a wonderful and very professional show and it also happened to star councillor Morgan. So just wanted to recognise that one as well, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Nice, thank you councillor Potter. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I'd like to acknowledge the International Women's Group, they do a really brilliant job, they did a Harmony Day event on the weekend and they epitomise what harmony is all about, they work together so well, they come from all different backgrounds, everything is very different, but they all work together well and I credit where credit's due, we can all take a look at their book because how well they work. And I'd like to say congratulations to them and congratulations to Catherine who is the new president and she's having a red heart go, so good luck to them, thank you.
Thanks councillor Gibson, councillor Lund. I love the name change, that's wonderful, thanks for that.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I'd like to follow one from councillor Gibson's acknowledgement, certainly over the last week I've been to a number of Harmony Day events put on by various community groups in our locality. It's been a brilliant show of diversity, harmony and people coming together and having not only a really good time but celebrating each other. I'd like to acknowledge the Filipino senior group as well as the International Women's Group and all of the volunteers who contribute to make all of these events such vibrant, wonderful events celebrating diversity in our community, so congratulations to you all.
Done, thanks councillors. Any other councillors with an acknowledgement? Councillor Barnes?
To you, Mr Mayor, we did the thing at Glengarry the other day, it was a big freeze, we actually ended up getting a lot of money donated through that and I think it's a great cause, you know, to do that sort of stuff, so anyone what's in trouble, they always get behind each other. We had the mayor getting a tank and the ice tank in there, that was pretty good and we had Darren Chester get in there too, so we actually just made a day of it and just enjoyed ourselves, but the main thing is we made a bit of money for them and I think they got about 11,000 for it for the day, so that was really good, so good job.
Yep, and I think congratulations to the Glengarry pub for organising that, it was a very cold ice path and councillor Barnes did drop in a lot more times than what I did and raised a lot more money. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? Yep, councillor, I'll go councillor Morgan, then I'll go councillor Gibson, yep.
Easy, I'd like to acknowledge the Your Fest event that was held in Moorwell on the Labor Day long weekend, it was a fabulous day that got the whole community together in Moorwell at the Town Commons, there was a lot of celebration, lots of fun, lots of activities, lots of cool reptiles, the reptile, got to hold some creepy, creepy animals, it was great. But everyone had a really lovely time and it was a great display of the wonderful elements of the Moorwell community and just coming together for a good day out, so congratulations to everyone involved.
Well done. Councillor Gibson, you've got another one?
Another two actually, sorry, I should have said it then and there. There's been some other events, there was the Bowls, the Henslight Bowls that was over the weekend and it was across the whole valley, you know, this is one of the major events in Victoria for the whole year with the bowling, so I congratulate all those who had anything to do with the running of the event because it's a major event that they ran. And the other one I'd like to acknowledge is Light Up Latrobe, councillor Pugsley and I went to that at the Moe Apeks Park. Now, Light Up Latrobe actually screened across the world, so it was a really great event that took place in our hometown of Moe, so congratulations to all.
Thanks councillor Gibson. Anybody else with an acknowledgement? I'll jump in with a couple, I'll follow up with what councillor Gibson said about the Victorian Bowls Open which is on, started on the weekend and goes all week, absolutely fantastic, it's using just about every bowls club across Latrobe City as well as some outside. The two centre points are Trelgany Bowls Club and the Yalorn Bowls Club over in Newborough, but they are bowling at a range of bowling clubs and they're just absolutely rapt that at every bowling green, there's crowds around which they haven't seen in years. It's the third year of five years that Latrobe City's got it, so kudos goes to our events team for landing it. They were hanging from the rafters at Trelgany today at 10.30, which was great to see and I know the Yalorn Bowls Club has had huge crowds as well, so it's been fantastic and it's been good to see a number of the bowlers have actually taken to the Moorwell Bowling Club which we know was very much affected by fire and they've heard about it and a lot of them are going over there for meals, which is just great. The second thing I'd like to acknowledge is they announced the Victorian Under 16 Country Basketball Team and for 10 players and five emergencies, we've got out of Latrobe City two players, one from Moe Meteoros and one from Trelgany Teabirds in the country team and another member of the five emergencies is from the Trelgany Teabirds as well, so when you think that takes in Geelong, Packenham, Bendigo, Ballarat and the rest of country Victoria, for us to have three players in it is absolutely fantastic and kudos to those organisations. All right councillors, I take it we've got no more acknowledgements, I think there's been a fair bit to acknowledge which has been great, I think it just shows there's so much to do in Latrobe City and we are doing so much as a community. Next we'll move on to the public participation, this is where we hear from the community, this is an opportunity for the public question time which we'll go to first, is an opportunity for any members of the public to lodge a question with the, to be answered by council at the council meeting and to clarify any issues of public interest. Eligible questions have been received in writing by noon on the Friday prior to the council meeting and will be responded to by the CEO. For tonight's council meeting, we've received three questions from the community and I'll hand over to our CEO, Mr Stephen Piersanti, to answer them.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, so as you said, there's three questions tonight, the first question is from Mr Damian Andrews and it relates to Latrobe City Council's federal election strategy, so the question is, given the delegation, and that's the council delegation, the mayor, myself and the deputy mayor, met with opposition leaders regarding economic diversification and job creation, did council meet with the Prime Minister Albanese to secure concrete federal government commitments for Latrobe City's economic transition and job creation? So in terms of responding to that question, sorry, the question was, did we secure concrete, sorry, did we seek to meet, I should say, so yes, we did seek to meet with the Prime Minister. Prior to the delegation to Canberra taking place, we wrote to the Prime Minister requesting a meeting, unfortunately due to the Prime Minister's scheduling conflicts, the meeting request was not able to be held, confirmed, but we have since sent a further follow-up letter to the Prime Minister requesting a meeting before the election and we are now awaiting a reply, so that's something we'll follow up as well. Thank you, Mr Mayor. The second question is from Mr Gus Lamden and it is in relation to community safety concerns, so the question is, what would council think in regards to having council security staff to patrol local areas with high levels of antisocial behaviour? Longtime local man suggested it on social media, it would greatly assist police and PSOs, that's one of the public service officers?
Public service officers?
I didn't say the right name. Who are clearly short-staffed is the question, so thanks for the suggestion is part of the response and we would like to acknowledge there are concerns in the community about incidents of antisocial behaviour. This proposal is an innovative way to respond to antisocial behaviour, however, at this point it's not part of our current strategy that council's exploring, our current focus is to work with the relevant state government agencies in order for them to address with us community safety concerns and we have been collaborating with Victoria Police and they have increased their presence in the local CBDs when there are escalated reports of antisocial behaviour to help improve perception of community safety and reduce instances of antisocial behaviour. Police are also currently working with our local law staff and officers to enforce regulations regarding drinking of alcohol in public places, this collaboration will help ensure that incidents are dealt with by personnel with the appropriate training and legal authority. We appreciate the concerns raised and the proactive approach to finding a solution, we'll continue to explore options to enhance safety in our community, in particular working with the state government and other partners and continuing to advocate to the state government in relation to community safety, about public safety. So that's the response to that question, both of those and the third question we'll provide in writing to those that have asked questions. The third question is from Mr Damian Andrews again and relates to Lake Narakan Advisory Committee, so the question is, can the council provide an update on the activities of the Lake Narakan Advisory Committee, including its recent meeting dates, visions and plans for Lake Narakan, recommendations made and their implementation, how the public can access past meeting records and whether meetings are open to the public observers or public submissions? There's a lot of points in that question, one question with multiple points, not multiple questions. So in response to that, the Lake Narakan Advisory Committee Terms of Reference outlines the committee's role which includes to report to council and provide appropriate advice, information and feedback on matters relevant to the Terms of Reference in order to facilitate decision-making by the council in relation to the discharge of its responsibilities. It is though an advisory committee and only and has no delegated decision-making authority. Minutes of the advisory committee meetings can contain various types of confidential information and accordingly are not made publicly available on council's website. Advisory committee meetings are not open to the public, as again, they do discuss confidential information, there is no requirement for their committee meetings to be open to the public under the Local Government Act 2020, however, any request to obtain specific documents, including minutes, would need to be assessed for their suitability to be released, whether all or part of the minutes sorted are able to be released would depend on the content and the parameters of the application. The committee may agree though to respond to a written submission forwarded from community members, although that would be at the committee's discretion. The meeting schedule and times for each of the meetings are determined by the committee with meetings held bimonthly or as deemed necessary by Latrobe City Council or the committee in order to fulfil its objectives. In terms of the bimonthly meetings though, I would add that the previous meeting was held, was the middle of last year in June 2024, there were no advisory committee meetings scheduled during the election period and there was a meeting scheduled for December 24, however, that was postponed until a new chair was appointed following council inductions, the next meeting is scheduled for 30th of April 2025. So that's the extent of tonight's questions, Mr Mayor and councillors.
Thank you, Mr CEO, we now move on to our public speakers and there are six members of the public who have registered to speak at tonight's meeting. The first speaker is Mr Ray Burgess who is speaking on item 7.3, the Community Connector Programme. It's Mr Burgess here, Ray, would you like to come up to the lectern please? You've got three minutes to speak and then we'll ask you to hang around so that if there's any questions the councillors can ask you. Thanks, Mr Burgess.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Well, I was asked by Tracy to come along and talk about what's happening in the Moor CBD and in the 32 years that I've been there, I'm the newsagent in Moorwell, I've had strippers on my back landing, I've been burnt down and a number of other things have happened to me that I've found confronting, but I've never been more confronted than I have been in the last three weeks, I had a stabbing outside my shop, we have people that are coming past our shop, causing trouble, swearing, talking, you know, just being disruptive, antisocial, I suppose you could say. I've had customers coming into me and saying to me, well, listen, we're scared, can I stay in your shop? We're scared? Customers walking along our street saying they're scared, can I come in? This is not it, council need to do something here. And so last week I was really disappointed that, after the last meeting, that the motion on the connectors programme didn't go through, so I'm imploring council here, now do something. Now, the CEO has already said that you're not going to have people patrolling up the street, well, you can't ignore this, you have to confront it and do something about it. Now, if we can get some government money associated with this connectors programme and get some data, we can find out what's happening to try and circumvent it. So, Mr Mayor and councillors, just once, just leaving here now, I implore you to reconsider this motion that Tracy's put up and vote for it to get up so that we can see some action happening in Moorwell, thank you.
Yep, just hang on there two secs, councillors, any questions? Yep, councillor Barnes?
I've got one there, Mr Mayor, sorry, I'd like to know, do the police get fairly involved with that situation, what you're talking about mate, do they patrol the streets enough or do you think they could do a bit more or, because when it comes down to the shy doing it, it's probably really a police matter, do they get very involved?
The police, you don't have to go there very often to see the police, not so much at our end of town, the newsagent's end of town, but down at the bus centre, you know, there's always trouble at the bus centre, there's always police coming there breaking up fights or breaking up people, they're trying to calm things down. They're not patrolling the street as such, in fact, I saw two coppers patrolling the street the other day, I said, good on you fellas, but they were coming back from a confrontation up at the bus station. So I think that would be part of any solution that you would make, it needs to be holistic, this solution, you can't just do one thing, connectors programme or whatever, officers patrolling, we need to examine this whole issue and try and work out a plan to confront it, it's not right, it's not a happy time in downtown Moor, I can tell you.
Councillors, any other questions? Councillor Campbell?
Hi Ray, hello. Have you been to the safety committee meetings to see what is being done and what is happening in the CBD of Moor?
No, no, I haven't, but I probably should and really Tracy asked me to come tonight and I thought, well, I should come because I'm a voice, people do know me and people respond, you know, when I advise them or they ask me for advice, so perhaps I should become more involved because unless we do something, nothing's going to change, definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result.
Yep.
Yep, councillors, any other questions? Yep, thank you, Mr Burgess. Thank you. Councillors, we move on to our next speaker tonight which is Catherine Harrison who's speaking on item 9.1, the use and development of land for a dwelling and ancillary outbuilding. Catherine, same thing, you've got three minutes and if you could hang around at the end of that so that the councillors can ask any questions, thank you.
I'm probably going to go over a little bit, sorry.
We are lenient, we are lenient.
Mr Mayor and councillors, thank you for your opportunity to speak before you this evening. I would like to express my objections to the planning permit application for the proposed residential dwelling to be conducted at 144 McGrath's Track, Hearns Oak. To provide some context, our property, lot 1, 120 McGrath's Track, abuts lot 2 of the property of 144 McGrath's Track, which was once part of the property. Our property contains the original dwelling. In August 2019, we were approached by the then current owners of lot 2 with a farm management plan, an FMP, seeking our consent for the removal of a restrictive covenant. After reviewing the FMP, we agreed to the removal of the covenant with the understanding that the proposed dwelling was necessary to support the farm management plan. The application was processed through the council and the community was notified with the FMP attached for review. It has recently came to our attention that as there was to be an amendment to the farming zone in the future, council decided to go down the path of not requiring an FMP on the planning permit. We were not informed about this change nor were the surrounding community members, we were under the impression that the dwelling was a necessity component of the FMP and had we known otherwise, we would not have consented to the removal of the restrictive covenant. There may also have been further objections from the community had this information been disclosed. The property in question has now had four owners with three now utilising the same planning permit, beginning with the original planning permit, then an amendment, then an extension was applied for which was approved and then within one month, the property was for sale again. Since this time, there has been additional two amendments, applications. Pre-November 2019, an FMP was required, then no FMP required and now council again require an FMP to be lodged with all applications. Furthermore, the property currently contains an illegal dwelling which was constructed and occupied by the previous owner. Council departments have now known about this for some time which we now understand is to be removed. Currently, the property is subject to a cease works notice for works undertaken on the land without a permit and we also understand that council is currently awaiting a V- And we also understand that council is currently awaiting a VCAT decision in relation to a matter regarding this property.
Sorry, Mrs Harrison, three minutes is up. If I give you another minute, will that give you enough time to finish it? Done.
Given the significant changes to the application itself, the evolving circumstances of the land, and the changes in planning policy, we strongly believe that a new planning permit should be applied for. This new permit should reflect the current signing interpretations and regulations. In the interest of the surrounding community and to ensure transparency and fairness, we respectfully urge the council to reconsider the proposed planning permit and require a new application in line with the current conditions. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councillors, have we got any questions? No? Thank you very much for that, Mrs Harrison, appreciate your time. Our next speaker tonight is Mr Rod Harrison. Rod, if you'd like to come and speak, you've got three minutes, you'll hear a buzzer at 30 seconds, and then another bell at time on, and then we'll see how we're going timewise. And if you can hang around at the end of it, just for any questions, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Mr Mayor and councillors, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I would like to endorse my wife's Catherine Harrison, as she said in expression her, expressing my concerns. I feel we have been misled by the planning scheme, which has all, has been changed several times since the release of the restriction of the covenant. My concern is that the house permitted does not give any reference to the subidity by the potential for the land to be used for non-agricultural purposes. And if this amendment goes through, as it could set a precinct to other landowners, don't need to follow the farm management plans either. The current amendment should not be relevant to the back to 2019's amendment. If not, not needing a farm management plan. Council needs to uphold the current FMP requirements of today. I guess what I'm wishing to convey is that there are several key issues regarding this property that have not yet been addressed or decided on, as such as I feel that the further consideration, taking everything into account before the permit is considered or approved. Thank you.
No worries. If you could just wait there for us for one minute. Mr Harrison, councillors, any questions? Councillor Pugsley.
Through you, Mr Chair. Mr Harrison, you mentioned the key issues that you didn't, that you feel haven't been addressed. Can you elaborate a little bit for me, please?
Okay, it's the planning permit itself, how it's changed, like from when we signed to what it was in the middle, and what it is now, and what was agreed on by council.
Councillor Pugsley, follow up question?
No, thank you for that, Mr Harrison, I'm finished, thank you.
Yep. Councillors, any other questions? No? Thank you for your time, Mr Harrison, appreciate it. Councillors, our next speaker is Albertina Poll, who is also speaking on item 9.1, use and development of land for dwelling and ancillary building, outbuilding. Is Miss Poll here or is she online, Mr CEO? Yep?
Need the team, yeah, online, there you go.
I'm here.
Yep, thanks, Miss Poll. The floor is yours, you've got three minutes, you'll hear a bell, 30 seconds to go and a bell at the end, and then we're being a little bit lenient, we'll give you another minute after that to finish up, if that's okay.
No worries, thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Albertina, and I'm here today to strongly object the planning permit application to 144 McGrath's Track. As a nearby resident, I have serious concerns about the intended use of this land and the ongoing disregard for planning regulations and the lack of alignment with the farmland zoning objectives. I urge councillors to uphold the planning scheme in its current form. This property is zoned as farmland, and the purpose of this zoning is clear, to support agricultural activities. Yet the current land use and this application do not demonstrate any genuine commitment to farming. The original application business plan was for hemp farming, but the new proposal provides no clarity on its future agricultural use. Instead, what I have seen is increasingly land fragmentation, with a 20-acre motorcycle track with the proposed addition of a dwelling, shedding and extended driveway, none of which which align in the intent of farmland zoning. There isn't much usable land left for actual farming. Currently, the land is only just 13 head of cattle sporadically. Allowing this development to proceed would set a precedent for further non-agricultural use in a protected farmland zone. Furthermore, this amendment planning permit does not meet Latrobe City Council's own current planning recommendations. The original planning permit is now 60 years old, the current amendment application is significantly different from the initial proposal. I believe this permit has been warehoused and has now been transformed. Additionally, there has been a VCAT cases where planning permits were granted by Latrobe City Council in farming zones which were not attached to a farming purpose. The outcome for these cases has been that the endorsed planning permits were revoked by VCAT. Additionally, I must also highlight a serious matter. Our elected speaker, Dr Derek Poll and his wife Jennifer Poll, have had an IVO placed against them by the landowners. This has prevented he and his wife from speaking to council members prior to this meeting or even to applying to speak here tonight, as per legal advice. This raises serious concerns about fairness and transparency in this process. I am concerned that other objectors may be intimidated, effectively silencing legitimate concerns from the community. I would also hope that councillors would not support coercion, this is what the intervention order appears to have been designed for. There is also appears to be unfair handling of the planning process. Mediation was initially offered to objectors, only to be withdrawn by the council after, which we had agreed to the meeting. Given these circumstances, I urge councillors to propose a motion to the delay to the vote by one month. This would allow time for accurate information to be gathered and for our elected representative to present to the council. I would hope in the interest of fairness and due process that all parties can attend that meeting. A fair and just resolution would be for the landowners of 144 Track to submit an entirely new planning permit application that meets the Latrobe City Council planning scheme requirements for Farm Zone 2. I urge you to make a decision that upholds the integrity of our planning system, protects agricultural land and ensures fairness in the process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Poll. If you could just stay there for one minute. Councillors, have we got any questions? No? Thank you for your time, Miss Poll, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councillors, our next speaker on item 9.1, use and development of land for dwelling and ancillary outbuildings, is Miss Taylor Gardner. Taylor, are you here? Yep, if you could come up, three minutes to speak, you'll get a bell at 30 seconds to go, a bell right on the three minutes, and then we'll see how we're going, and we may be able to extend the time. If you can hang around at the end, just for any questions, Miss Taylor. Thank you.
Good evening all. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of our planning permit amendment for dwelling and a shed at 144 McGrath's Track, Hearn's Oak. This amendment is straightforward. It reflects a design change for an already approved dwelling and outbuildings to better suit our needs and the land. We already hold a valid planning permit and could begin building a dwelling tomorrow. This amendment remains within metres of the already approved location and doesn't pose to change the use of the land at all. The original planning permit was granted based on the proposal's alignment with the objectives of improved land management, and since purchasing the property, we are actively doing exactly that. We fenced the property for rotational grazing, removed invasive weeds, cut hay, spread pasture seed and fertiliser, constructed a second dam and currently run cattle on the property. These are real improvements that support the FCD two objectives. So concerns that our amendment design lacks a link to agriculture are simply not accurate. In response to objections, we moved the house and shed further from the southern and western boundaries. The visual impact is very limited, thanks to the natural undulation of the land and screening provided by a row of mature conifer trees along the boundary. We've also prepared a visual aid to show the generous setbacks from nearby homes, which further reduces any potential for amenity impacts. We also offered to attend mediation with the objectives, but were advised by council's general manager that it would not be beneficial, as none of the objections were withdrawn, even after we moved the location in direct response to their concerns. We were willing to engage, but this highlights that the objections lack real merit, which is also reflected in the planner's report. It is important to note, the concerns about a motorbike track on the eastern side of the land are completely unrelated to this amendment and are being addressed separately. This home means a great deal to us. We've invested in this land physically, financially and emotionally. We want to build a future here for our family, centred around rural living and sustainable land care. We respectfully ask for your support tonight. And I feel like after Albertina Poll spoke, I should address the IVO. My partner and I felt the need to get an IVO against Jennifer and Dirk Poll because they were exhibiting stalking behaviours against us. Thank you.
Thanks, Miss Gardner. If you could just wait. Councillors, have we got any questions? No? Thank you, Miss Gardner, appreciate your time tonight. Councillors, we move on to our sixth and final speaker for tonight, Mr William Stewart, who is speaking on item 9.2, a planning permit application for the use of land for a childcare centre, display and business identification signage and subdivision of land. Mr Stewart, you've got three minutes, you'll get a bell at 30 seconds to go, bell at the end, and if you could hang around for any questions, please, that'd be great.
Sure, I'm glad we do have a timer, because I haven't got my watch.
I'm hoping it should be up on the screen behind me, there should be, and we'll flick it back to three minutes if we can, because I think they've already started early on you. Done.
Okay. Honourable mayor, councillors and all other attendees tonight, good evening. I'll rely on my notes for the meeting, and it's about agenda item number 9.2, proposed childcare centre on Manly Circuit, Latrobe City's grounds of refusal. I thank Latrobe City for their clearly expressed reasons for their refusal to give a planning permit for childcare centre in Manly Circuit. The original objections and reasons by Latrobe City have been shared among residents, whether they're retirees, working people, and they're also work from home people around Manly Circuit. I do acknowledge that Latrobe City will need a growing number of placements for childcare. I don't have a problem with that, it's going to happen, has to, we're growing. It's all about the right location. Manly Circuit is not the right location. It's a very narrow street, it's in a zergel, it's not a straight road. Something else that tossed me, within the text of the application, there's a statement there that notices had been issued to every, what would you say, I guess, to every affected property around that circuit, and that a, that a notice would be appended to a fence near the property. Anecdotally, I wasn't aware of anyone who'd received such a notice, whether it was to the householder or personal, don't know. The A4 sized notice on what's basically a farm-like wire fence was in a plastic pocket, it didn't take long to be weather worn, and it became illegible. There's also no evidence throughout the consultation period that all stakeholders have been drawn in. I refer to clean away waste removal, I refer to all the essential services, and I believe they should have had input into it so that they could make their forward planning as to how this might affect them. As an aside, there's an opportunity for the property owner to discontinue using a driveway to their residence, which is accessed by what appears to be an unrated railway or similar reserve parcel of land. There's ample space within the subject property to achieve insulation of driveway within the rated property. Aerial images through LASSI, L-A-S-S-I, will confirm this. If I'm wrong about it, I apologise. Again, I thank council for their position of refusing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Stewart. If you could wait there for a minute. Councillors, have we got any questions for Mr Stewart? No? Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it, thank you. Councillors, next on the agenda, we have item seven, notices of motion. There are three items in this section. The first item, 7.1, is 202505, number of protective services officers in Moorwll, Moi and surrounding areas, commencing on page six of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, I note you, and Councillor Pugsley, I note you. Councillor Gibson, are you moving? And Councillor Pugsley? Ah, you've got to leave, sorry. Councillor Gibson, hang on, sorry now. Councillor Pugsley, you have declared an interest, we'll start that all over again.
Just, might have the team, can you just get, on our screen here, this says Zoom meeting, can we just get the one that displays the, what's going out live? We've currently got the picture of the speaker on the lectern, which is empty.
Just for our IT team, just the Zoom meeting is showing an empty lectern, that's it. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Councillor Pugsley has now left the room, and I'll apologise to her later for not getting her, not acknowledging her conflict of interest earlier. Councillor Gibson, you are moving.
Yes.
Councillor Lund.
I'd like to second.
Councillor Lund is seconding. Bear with me, councillors. Councillor Gibson, do I have any objection, councillors? Councillor Gibson, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor. I put this to my fellow councillors for support, please. We all know, and we've heard Mr Burgess talk about the issues in Moorwll CBD, we also have issues in Moi CBD. Now, in Terrebonne, they do have PSOs from six o'clock at night till two in the morning to meet every train. We don't have that in Moi or Moorwll, and by having the presence of them, they can actually not just do the platform, they can, the line of sight from the platform, they can still oversee. Now, I believe that, and especially given the Community Safety Committee that we met with recently, councillor Campbell and myself, this is something that they were advocating to have, because sadly, we have an element of, element of the population who come down from Melbourne each day, they jump the train, jump off the train at Moorwll, some at Moi, and they are engaging in behaviour that is not safe, to be straight down the line. Now, there is different programmes that are being put in place, but this would greatly help not just the police, but everyone. So, it was an election promise that Terrebonne got the PSOs, which is great for Terrebonne, but we have serious issues that need to be addressed at Moi and Moor railway stations, to the point that one of our councillors was actually assaulted at the Moi railway station. So, that's the last thing we need, let alone stabbings or anything else. We have issues, and we're calling on the state government to actually help us with the mess that has been, that actually is occurring now through no fault of our own. So, I would urge my fellow councillors to help me, and let's see if the state government would help us too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Lund, you seconded, would you like to speak or reserve?
Happy to speak, Mr Mayor, thank you. I am very passionate about supporting councillor Gibson's notice of motion tonight. What we're calling for, what she's calling for- What we're calling for, what she's calling for here are for increased protective services officers at Moi and Moorwell railway station is one of a suite of options that we need to address the community's safety concerns, and more broadly, the concerning behaviour and impacts that we are seeing in our community. Increased PSO presence could help to deter crime and antisocial behaviour, and can help to restore public confidence in using public transport. Our residents have voiced growing concerns over safety, and it's important that we respond with a strong preventative measures where we can. An investment in security could also reduce pressure on local police, as PSOs can handle some incidents directly at the station, freeing up police resources for broader community needs. This motion sends a clear message to the state government that our community deserves protection and safe access to public services, and we need their support to make this a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Okay, councillors, Councillor Gibson, we've had no speakers against, so you don't get a close. Councillors, we've had speakers, so I'm going to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Lund, Councillor Howe, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Campbell and myself, I declare them, and Councillor Gibson, I declare the motion carried. Thank you, councillors. Could we get Councillor Pugsley back in the room, please? Councillors, the next item is a notice of motion I've put up, therefore I'll be asking the Deputy Mayor, Councillor Gibson, to chair this part of the meeting, if that's all right with you. Councillor Gibson, Mr CEO. Come on down, get to the dark side.
Okay, councillors, item number 7.2, notice of motion for the Terrelegon Youth Activity Precinct site. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Harriman, I note you, you're moving the motion.
Happy to move, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder for the motion? Sorry, it's really small.
Um, Councillor Pugsley, I'm happy to second, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, I thought I saw a hand, but I didn't know. Councillor Pugsley, seconding the motion. Do I have opposition?
Councillor Howe here.
Howe. No worries. Okay, Councillor Harriman, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The reason I brought this up is, quite a few years ago, a number of years ago, I believe we go back to about 2018, a group of young teenagers got a petition up, which they got 5,000 signatures to, to move the skate park in Terrelegon from its current location due to unsocial behaviour, and move it to a different site. Council officers then engaged with 122 people at various sites, two-thirds of who recommended the Angus Bererton site for a skate park and youth activity precinct. Now, that went out across the town, there was numerous sessions held, numerous ways people could respond, it was in-person, they had plans developed for two sites, three sites, and it came down that of the 122 respondents, 81 preferred the Angus Bererton site to be the location of the youth activity precinct, and they came up with a fairly good design of it and how they'd like to see it developed. We now come to, a number of years later, quite a number of years later, and we still don't have a site picked for this. Council, in its wisdom, decided to look at a different site in K Street. That site, the original site that was recommended by the council, not the officers, not the youth, not the community, was deemed ineligible and not the appropriate site. We now have a number of other sites that have been proposed. The community is still screaming out for the Angus Bererton site to be accepted. A number of those original teenagers, who are now in their twenties, that signed that petition that got it started and got over 5,000 signatures, are still saying, where's our skate park, and why isn't it at Angus Bererton? And I think that speaks heaps for this council, that we've let a great opportunity slip. We had 66% of respondents, 66% of young kids in our community saying that's where they wanted it, was Angus Bererton, and I think it's time, we recognise that rather than looking at other sites again, we go to where the community wanted it, where the community will use it, where the users wanted it, where kids are still saying they prefer it, and we listen to our community, we listen to the youth that are going to use it, and we put it in the site that they want, and the rest of the community, or the majority of the rest of the community, wanted it. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Harriman. Councillor Pugsley, you second the motion? Are you speaking now, or you wish to reserve?
Through you, Madam Chair, I wish to reserve at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, I'm speaking against this motion, there's two reasons mainly. The first is the suitability of the site, and the second, and the main reason is, I think it's a flawed decision-making process, which is likely to result in a poor outcome for our community. So I'll start with the proposed site. If you look at the existing skate park locations in Moi, Moorwell, Sale and Bansdale, they're either in or they're near the CBD in high-traffic areas. This provides a great passive surveillance. In contrast, the current site, which is located down near the Terrelegon Creek, near the tennis centre, has issues with antisocial behaviour due to being in that tucked-away position. The proposed new site is just across the creek, slightly better, but it's still not ideal as far as passive surveillance. The proposed site also lacks basic supporting infrastructure, such as public toilets and nearby shops or eateries. The second issue, and as I said, the most important one, is with the process of community engagement. The community consultation data, which we're relying on, is from December 2020, so that's five years ago. Even then, the preference for Angus Bererton was 66%, which is hardly an overwhelming majority. Since then, significant changes have been made, such as the development of the Gippsland Performing Arts Centre and the Gippsland Regional Aquatic Centre. The Terrelegon CBD has changed dramatically over the past five years. Making decisions based on outdated data would be poor practice, and would likely lead to a suboptimal result for Terrelegon and for the broader Latrobe City community. Council has recently completed a community consultation process for the Terrelegon Community Precinct master plan. As part of this, we sought input on a suitable location for the youth, for the youth activity precinct. The results from both the survey and the targeted consultations suggest that if the youth activity precinct relocated in the activity centre, a site closer to the GRAC or GPAC would be preferred. In fact, 80% of respondents listed locations near GRAC or GPAC as their top choice for a skate park. These proposed sites offer ample parking, are near public toilets and cafes, and are within walking distance from both the train and bus stations, providing convenience for users and for their families. I'm not ruling out any, any location at this stage, but I believe further engagement with our community is needed before we make the final decision. As councillors, we should have the most current and relevant information to ensure we have the best possible decisions for our community. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Howe. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Do I have a speaker against the motion? Councillor Lund.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I have to say, this is one that I was really thinking about, because there is a need for a youth precinct in Terrelegon, but we have to be responsible in our approach to this, and we, like you indicated, there's, our current data is over five years old. The original plan for Angus Bererton Reserve is over five years old and no longer reflects the current needs. A reassessment is necessary to ensure the youth precinct is placed in the best location in and around the CBD. My biggest concern is that Angus Bererton Reserve is subject to inundation and floodway overlays. The area flooded in May, shortly after this site was previously rejected, further proving it isn't necessarily suitable. The May 2021 floods severely impacted multiple assets, including those at Terrelegon Recreation Reserve, which we are now trying to move to higher ground. Repeating this mistake with the youth precinct is irresponsible. The community, especially local youth, need to be consulted, they need to lead this, and they, we need to, again, go to look for what the best location could be in terms of accessible and suitability for a youth skate park that is within the CBD as it looks today. So to sum up, given the history of flooding in the area, approving a youth precinct here would be short-sighted and costly in the long run. It is our responsibility as decision-makers at this table to ensure we are not repeating mistakes of the past, and our decisions have a positive legacy for the future generations and future councils. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Against the motion? Anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say, I'd just like to make it be known that it is very important that the youth have an area that they feel comfortable with, and I do believe that that would be the reserve, the Angus Bererton Reserve in question. I do note that my colleagues have said that about the parking. I do believe that with the current city congestion, that at the Angus, Angus Bererton Reserve, that there would be more chance of parking. When it comes to youth and skating and skate parks, the extra distance from the skate park is not a barrier for them. They're quite fit, they like their exercise, and they're quite happy to skateboard that extra distance. I think that it's very important that we remember the promises that we have had in previous engagements, and remember what the public really want. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Harriman, do you wish, as we've had opposition, do you wish to close?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Chair. I do, I'd just like to reiterate, number one, it's the council officers' recommendation from the past that Angus Bererton was the best site, so the officers deemed it suitable to be used. Number two, if you go past there on any given Sunday, any given Saturday, any given afternoon, there is a number of kids on scooters, skateboards and BMX using the netball courts. There's actually more kids there, because it's more visible, than what are using the current skate park. Having gone down and spoken to parents with young kids there, the reason they do it is, Angus Bererton is more visible. The amount of traffic going along Breed Street past that site makes it highly visible. They find it's easier for them to get to because they live in the local area, and it feeds in, it's easier to get a park, because when it's not being used for netball, the car parks are empty. They also find that there's a lot of walkers through that area, it's the home to the park run, and there's a number of tracks along Terrelegon Creek that are constantly in use, and the parents of these kids feel safer being at that site than they do at the current skate park site. So therefore, councillors, I'd urge you to support this notice of motion. Thanks, Madam Deputy Chair.
Thank you, Councillor Harriman. As we've had speakers, I'll put the motion to the vote, and because you're only small on my screen, can I ask you to put your hand up high, please? All those in favour? Councillor Harriman, Councillor Barnes, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor, thank you, Councillor Campbell and myself, those against? Councillor Howe, Councillor Lund, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Potter, I declare the motion carried. And with that, I will give the chair back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councillors, we now move on to item 7.3, Community Connectors Programme, commencing on page 11 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Lund?
Thank you.
Councillors, do I have a seconder? I'll go with Councillor Morgan, your hand stayed up longer. Councillor, do I have any opposition, councillors? Councillor Pugsley opposing, and seconding, it's Councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm submitting this notice of motion requesting a report on the Community Connectors Programme to be implemented in the Moorwell CBD as a proactive measure to address ongoing safety concerns. The Community Connectors Programme could play a key role in building a more connected and engaged community with a goal of improving safety by elevating trust and communication among residents, local services and council. I'm seeking the report so that we can have a comprehensive analysis of how this programme could be rolled out, with a focus on its potential to complement the existing efforts of agencies working in the area. This Community Connectors Programme presents an opportunity to gather valuable data that can be used for advocacy around the level of investment and measures needed to better support Moorwell. By gathering clear and on-the-ground insights, we could build a strong case for further resources from state and federal levels of government, and ensure that our community needs are met. We need the report to explore how the Community Connectors Programme can serve as a pilot project for a larger rollout across Latrobe City. By starting in Moorwell CBD, we can identify best practices, refine our approach, and ensure that our expanded programme delivers optimal results for all of Latrobe. I see this as a proactive step by council, one that is closely linked to the future activation of Moorwell. Improving community safety is essential to creating an environment that encourages growth, development and positive engagement. This programme could not only improve safety, it could contribute to a more vibrant and connected community. I encourage councillors to support this motion to receive a report on the Connected, Community Connectors Programme, and I'd like to underline that, it is to receive a report, it is not to spend money, at this stage it is to receive a report, recognising its potential to be an integral part of our broader safety and activation strategies for Moorwell and the broader Latrobe.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Councillor Morgan, you seconded, would you like to speak or reserve?
I'll reserve for the moment.
Reserve? No worries, Councillor Pugsley, you opposed, would you like to speak?
Thank you, through you, Mr Chair. I believe that at the last council meeting, we did put through an alternative amendment, and we did keep the removal of seats and the increase of police and local laws. I believe that in the short timeframe, that that has made a difference, and I would advocate that we continue down the same path and let that process have a chance to achieve what we need to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Lund. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Do I have a speaker? Yes, yes, sorry, I was going to say, Councillor Potter, I think you're going to be trying to second it, you're going to be speaking for. All yours, Councillor Potter.
Thank you, sorry, I got myself confused. So, we've seen tonight, Mr Burgess come through, you know, a business owner who has a business in the main street of Moorwell who is being significantly impacted by the behaviours that we're seeing around the Moorwell CBD. So while a justice response is necessary to address those immediate concerns of safety and accountability, true and lasting change comes from proactive prevention. We cannot arrest our way out of complex social issues. Instead, we must invest in solutions that address the root causes of the antisocial behaviour, poverty, homelessness, mental health struggles and social isolation. And that's really where the Community Connectors Programme is going to step in and make some really big impact. So we all understand that strong communities create healthier, safer, more vibrant spaces, and I think we all want to see that in the CBD of Moorwell. You know, sorry, so the primary purpose of this programme is to have proactively engagement with people at risk, offering a hand, not just a warning. By directly working with those experiencing homelessness or vulnerability, the programme connects them with the appropriate services, whether that's housing support, mental health care, employment assistance or addictive services. This early intervention helps reduce antisocial behaviour by addressing its root causes, rather than merely reacting to the symptoms and the behaviours that we're actually seeing. But the benefits of this initiative go beyond just individuals in need. When we invest in connection and inclusion, we create safer and more welcoming public spaces for everybody. Local businesses thrive in an environment where all community members feel supported, and visitors can actually enjoy the Moorwell CBD and have a much more positive shopping experience. So instead of pushing people further into isolation, the Community Connectors Programme helps integrate them back into the fabric of society, reducing those tensions and fostering mutual respect. So on a broader level, this initiative strengthens the way our local services work together. By fostering collaboration between the different agencies, the Community Connectors Programme ensures that the most vulnerable members of our community receive the help they need in a coordinated and effective manner. in a coordinated and effective manner. This makes our community support systems more robust, ensuring that people are not just directed towards services but actually connect with them in a meaningful way. So when council and community come together to support those who need it most, we build stronger and more inclusive community. The Community Connectors Programme is not just about reducing antisocial behaviour, it's about creating a town where everyone has the opportunity to live with dignity, feeling included and contribute in a positive way. It's about recognising that every individual, regardless of their circumstances, deserves respect, support and a chance to rebuild their lives.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion, councillor Howe.
Hey, thank you, Mr Mayor and through you, Mr Mayor. Antisocial behaviour is a problem in all our major towns, but Moorwell in particular have continued to see an increase in both the frequency and the severity of such behaviour. Council, we've met with Advance Moorwell, we've had a speaker tonight and I've been approached by countless Moorwell residents who have voiced their concerns to me. They feel that they've been let down by their leaders and honestly, who can blame them? The last council meeting, we voted against providing funding for this programme because it wasn't an issue of our making. And I agree, it wasn't a problem, we caused a problem, but the reality is it exists and we're part of the solution. The Community Connectors Programme is showing excellent results when implemented at the Dandenong Station and I believe it should be seriously considered for Moorwell. It aligns with our council plan and our municipal health and wellbeing plan. There is no implications to the budget for this because it's just a report. So I fully support the motion and I look forward to reviewing the report when it comes through. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Councillor Campbell?
The programme from, through you, Mr Mayor. The programme at Dandenong was funded by Metro Trains. So we should be working towards, working with maybe Beeline, state government. Also, the one at Frankston was in conjunction with Metro Trains as well and they're seeking funding for over a million dollars for the 2025/26 budget. So if we can work towards something like that, I'm not sure if this is for or against, but that's something we should be working towards as a council.
Yep, thank you councillor Campbell. Do I have any speakers for the motion? Speakers against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And we all know there's issues, which is why I did the notice motion. I, my concern with this is not, not that I'm against providing help for the community because we desperately need it, don't have an issue with that. My concern is that at the Safety Committee, there was a call made with the minister and the inspector of police and from there it was to go back to the minister and they were going to actually coordinate a programme going forward. So my concern is I, I'm the last one who wants to step on a minister's toes. So I, I hear what they're saying and as I say, I don't have an issue with trying to address it, but I believe that's what she's trying to do because Moorwell has been a dumping ground for the different people, which is wrong. Now, three of the businesses have actually said since we have taken out the seating, there's been increased police patrols, there's also been the treaty ban that's been down there, things have changed. Is it as much as we need and want? No, it's not. And I, I won't come back from that at all, but actions are being taken. I, as I say, I'm not against it, but I do not wish to step on toes from a minister who reportedly is already putting things into action. So I, I will leave it there and I might just be, yeah, okay, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Does any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Morgan, you, oh sorry, councillor Barnes? Sorry councillor Morgan.
For you, Mr Mayor. I really liked what you guys have said over there tonight and appreciate the, what was his name, the guy who came up and was talking about it? Yeah, thanks very much for that mate because I know there is a big problem down there. I think what it's all about, this is all about safe, people's safety. And if people are feeling a bit scared and frightened about stuff and going into shops and trying to get protection, there's obviously a big problem down there. So I think we need to get this matter addressed as soon as possible, make it happen and make people feel safe again. That's about it.
Thank you councillor Barnes, I think that's everybody's had a go. Councillor Morgan, we're back to you, you reserved.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Reiterating what some of my colleagues have said, I'd like to first mention that what Mr Burgess said earlier in the meeting is so true, that we need to take a holistic approach when responding to community safety concerns in Moorwell. The issues that our community, my community, is facing are multifaceted issues. They're long term issues, they've been around for a while, there's no one solution to them. And I think if we solely focus on a justice based response, we're going to completely miss the mark. It's, it's completely multifaceted and we need to take that holistic, multifaceted approach to dealing with these concerns. Based on feedback I have personally received from people across Moorwell, there was a lot of disappointment in regards to the decision that we made at last month's meeting to not invest in the Community Connection Programme. It was felt that it was a decision to not invest in Moorwell and our community. I think the solution to these social issues are not going to be helped if we further demonise Moorwell or subsections of our community. We need to, as a council, walk the talk and show up. I think it's vital that the work we do fosters a stronger sense of community and connection. We need to show up for Moorwell, we need to show up for the whole community and we need to really show that we are there and show that Moorwell matters to us as leaders and show that Moorwell matters to Latrobe City Council. And I think, yeah, we just need to do the work to ensure that Moorwell is safe, it is vibrant, it is thriving, whether that's for residents, whether it's for people who work there or study there, whether it's for business owners or visitors to our township. We need to do something and we need to show that we are listening. And I think this report would be a step towards that, to show that we have heard those concerns and we are going to explore what the potential impacts of investing in the Community Connectors Programme is and how we can continue to show up for Moorwell. So, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund, we've had opposition, would you like to close?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillors for the robust debate and your considered thoughts on the matter. I implore you to consider supporting the notice of motion to receive a report that would detail for us things around funding options, how we could gather data and how the programme can be used to support a more cohesive response to the issues that we are seeing in community and particularly in Moorwell. We, it is a multifaceted issue. It is not just a law and order issue and this report would allow us to explore further how we can, I guess, build on the strengths that we do have at council and that is our connection to services, community and our place on the ground. And also build on the data and the knowledge that we have as local residents and local community leaders here. I, I think it's a socially just response to the issues that we are seeing in Moorwell and I would really, I really feel very strongly that we need to be looking at this as a whole community approach. Continuing to demonise people in our community and the behaviours that we are seeing isn't making it go away. And we've heard from Ray and many of us have heard from many local community members about the distress this is causing. And we need to be looking at it so that we can activate Moorwell and more broadly, this is something that can be piloted in Moorwell and we know it's not. This isn't just a Moorwell issue we're talking about. Every one of us sitting at this table has been dealing with community safety concerns since we came into the role. We get this right here, it can be rolled out as a signature piece for Latrobe City in how we support our community to deal with these things. And I think that that is the really, that is the power and what we're doing today, that is what we're here for. We are here to make these tough decisions, sometimes it's uncomfortable and I'm okay with uncomfortable if we can get to where we need to, to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, we've had speakers, so we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Barnes, I've got the wrong one there, bear with me. And those opposed? Councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and the two who haven't voted, which is myself and councillor Gibson, I will take as abstaining, which is counted as a vote against. Councillors, that motion is carried. All right, moving on to our next item, strategic items for decision, item eight. The next item on the agenda, 8.1, there is one item, review of single use water bottles at council facilities commencing on page 15 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Campbell, bear with me, councillor Campbell is moving. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Pugsley. Do I have any opposition? No opposition. Councillor Campbell, would you like to speak?
Through you, Mr Mayor, no.
No, okay. Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak or reserve?
I'll, I'll speak, thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I believe this is, our term really speaks for itself as my councillor, fellow councillor Jo Campbell has basically just indicated. The recycling schemes have evolved since the original motion was passed and sales, and we have seen that sales of water has decreased as a result of the original motion. I think that as part of our safe and healthy council beliefs, I believe that water is an important role in that and that whatever we can do that is sustainable, that, that helps our residents consume water is very, very important. And this will just ensure that there is an affordable motion, affordable option when they present to one of our venues. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Do I have a speaker against the motion? Sorry, we've got to go against first. Speaker for the motion, I'm thinking councillor Lund, do you wish to speak for?
Yeah, apologies, Mr Mayor, I do wish to speak for this motion. First of all, I want to begin by recognising the council's commitment to reducing environmental impacts and promoting sustainability across our community. It is important that we're always looking for ways to improve and lead by example in this space. I also want to acknowledge the feedback we've received from the community on this issue. Many have voiced concerns, ideas and suggestions which have helped shape this decision today. Listening to our community is critical and we've taken these perspectives into account when considering the reintroduction of bottled water. Since the reintroduc-, sorry, since the introduction of the container deposit scheme, which includes plastic bottles, we've seen significant progress in managing waste and recycling. This scheme is a step, a key step in reducing the amount of plastic going into landfill and supporting better recycling practices. I would also like to note, following on from what councillor Pugsley had said, is that the scheme had not have been implemented when the original decision was taken. By reintroducing bottled water into council facilities, we're supporting the container deposit scheme, knowing that most bottles will hopefully be recycled responsibly. I acknowledge that access to bottled water remains crucial, especially in our public spaces where drinking water options may be limited and our focus should be on a balance of ensuring public access to bottled water and encouraging and championing strong recycling habits. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against? Speaker for? Any councillor wish to, councillor Gibson, you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this motion. I, I was one of the councillors who were on the council when the original was put up. But I think we've, we've actually, in conjunction with this and in conjunction with councillor Pugsley's notice of motion at the last council meeting, I really think we've got a way forward that benefits everyone because as we know, people for lots of different reasons want to have a bottle of water and let's face it, they're at a rec centre and they're going to want water. So they, some will have their own bottles and some will fill up, but the majority, they want a bottle of water that's refrigerated, it's cold, they can go and grab it after their match and off they go. But in conjunction with that, we also have got a way forward with recycling. So I, I think it's the best of both worlds. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Okay, we've had no speakers against, so you don't get to close. Councillor Campbell. Councillors, we've had a motion, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried. Thank you councillors. We now move on to statu-, item nine, statutory planning. And next on the agenda, we have two items in this section. The first item is 9.1, 2019/173/B, use and development of land for a dwelling and ancillary building, commencing on page 25 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Yep. Councillor Campbell is moving, councillor Lund seconding. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter opposing? Bear with me, councillor, councillors. Councillor Campbell, you moved, would you like to speak?
No, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Lund, you seconded, did you want to speak or reserve?
I think I'll reserve.
Yep, that's fine.
Sorry.
That's right. Councillor, councillor Potter, you opposed, would you like to speak?
Ah, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor and through you. This is a really important planning matter concerning a proposal within a designated farming zone two. And while I acknowledge the applicant's efforts to respond to the feedback and to the objections, particularly their modification around the dwellings placement, some significant concerns remain regarding the fundamental purpose of the land and its actual intended use. This property spanning 20 hectares is located in farming zone two where the primary objective is to support and sustain agricultural activities. The original planning permit was granted on the basis that a dwelling would be constructed in conjunction with a detailed plan to cultivate crops on the site. However, since that time, there's been no clear evidence of farming activity, nor has a farm management plan been provided to outline how the land will be used for agricultural purposes. And without this, the proposal does not align with the core intent of a farming zone. Furthermore, the revised application includes significant changes such as the modification to the house design and location, as well as the addition of a huge 360 square metre shed. That's a big shed, Mr Mayor. While these adjustments may enhance certain aspects of the property, they fail to address the core issue, the absence of farming. Planning in a farming zone is not about constructing large dwellings, it's about ensuring the land is used productively, supports agricultural integrity and prevents land use that could negatively impact on other farming activities in the area. Granting a permit under these circumstances would set a concerning precedent. It risks turning farming zone two into rural residential developments, undermining the very purpose of these areas. We must ensure that land designated for farming remains dedicated to agricultural activity and is not gradually repurposed for non-farming activities. In conclusion, while we appreciate the applicant's willingness to modify their plans based on on feedback, however, that lack of farm management plan and the absence of demonstrable agricultural activity make it impossible for me to support this permit. It's essentially that the planning decisions uphold the integrity of the farming zone and prioritise agricultural sustainability. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Howe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you. We started, we're to write that the planning application for tonight is for an amendment of an existing application that was approved in two thousand and nineteen, and it is also separate from the other planning permit that's on the same site at the moment at VCAT. If you look at the report, there were seven objections that were received. Our officers have, have answered and addressed all of them, which is in attachment eight. They've also received advice from other areas of council where they need that advice. Also, following this, the applicant had amended the proposal by relocating the dwelling and the outbuildings further from the southern and western boundaries to try and help and address the objectors' concerns. Unfortunately, on re-advertising, all the objections remained. Our planning team has considered this proposal against all the relevant sections of our planning scheme and considered the objections and believe that the proposal is generally consistent with the applicable objectives and decision guides. They have listed a plethora of conditions, which they do in most, most planning matters, which must be adhered to, ensuring that all works will be completed with minimal disruption to the neighbouring properties. So I'm happy to support the motion and the proposal. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor Gibson, I note you, yep.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I have been the recipient of different sides on this planning permit. And I note what the objectives are saying, but I also note, this was actually bought with a planning permit in place. So it's not to try and put one in halfway down the track or anything. It was bought with a planning permit. They could start building tonight if they wanted. So it's just, as councillor Howe was saying, this is just to amend what they already have. And they have actually tried to appease or nullify some of the concerns that were raised by moving the shed, et cetera. So I do know this is very emotive with some of them, but at the end of the day, there is actually a planning permit in play and they can build a perm-, they can build a permit, sorry, they can actually build a house. So I'm sorry, they have the right to do that already. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Lund, councillor Lund, you reserved? Howie Lund? Thanks councillor Lund, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I did. I just want to pick up from what councillor Gibson just said. I realise that this is a very emotive issue for many people, but we can't delve into the broader process that is in a, a different, sorry, into the broader use of land, that's in a different process. They do have a permit to build already. What is before us is the notice to amend the permit, and that has gone through quite, from what I can see, quite a rigorous process. There's been quite a lot of changes and cooperation to show that there is commitment to ensure the development aligns with both council standards and community expectations. They, I think from memory from the speakers, this is the fourth owner, so they have, they do, councillor Gibson is nodding at me, so they do have the permit to build already. I'm in support of this and I would encourage all parties going forward to, you know, sit through the process and, you know, work through it as it comes up. But what is before us today is an amended, is an amended permit, and it's met all the criteria.
Thank you, councillor Lund. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to close?
Through you, Mr Mayor, no.
Thank you, councillor Campbell. Councillors, we've had speakers for and against, so we're going to put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. Those opposed? Councillor Potter and councillor Morgan, I'll note you as abstaining, which will be counted as a vote against. Thank you, councillors, I declare the motion carried. And councillors, can I thank you, that is a very emotive debate to be had, and I thank you for keeping it respectful. As I said, it's been very emotive for the people involved, and I do respect the way you held that debate. Councillors, we now move on to item nine point two, which is planning permit application twenty twenty four slash one three three, use of land for a childcare centre, display of business identification signage and subdivision of land commencing on page sixty-seven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Campbell is moving, moving councillor Campbell. Do I have a second? Councillor Howe, do I have any opposition? Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
Yes, through you, Mr Mayor, I will say something on this one. I've had a lot of people in the area quite concerned about traffic management, and I think the Department of Planning have done a good job, and their recommendation to refuse, I agree, because there's just nowhere for these cars to go. That's putting an extra ninety-six, ninety-six cars, potentially twice a day, to come backwards and forwards in such a small street, in a small area. Also, we've got the issue that the, on Bank Street, the underpass for kids to cross to go to Lavala, that hasn't been implemented yet to go under the highway. And also, we've got, those traffic lights are still not operational, which is causing a lot of issues in that area. They can't get across the highway to drop their kids off to school or go to work.
Thank you, councillor Campbell. Councillor Howe, did you wish to speak?
Oh yeah, I'll speak. There's not a lot more to say on that. Good development, wrong location. I think that's, that's what I'm hearing, and I agree a hundred percent. That proposed facility is just simply too large for the, for the site they've offered. Positioned at the bowl of a circuit on a minor road would lead, just lead to an unacceptable level of traffic congestion. And I know that we've got shortage of, always seem to have a shortage of childcare spaces in Trelgden, but this proposal isn't right, as I just said before. A good proposal in the wrong location isn't a great outcome for, for the Trelgden residents. So I'm happy to support the, the decision to refuse to grant a permit on this. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillors, do I have a speaker against? Speaker for? Speaker for, councillor Pugsley.
Yes, I totally agree, it is the right thing in the wrong location. I note that there is potentially an extra hundred and seventeen cars coming in, twenty-one childcare workers and ninety-six children. I also note that there were twenty-nine objections, and most of those were objections in response to the roads were too narrow. The infrastructure just certainly isn't there. It's not also consistent, a ninety-six place childcare centre is not consistent with relevant objectives and guidelines of the scheme, of the, of our planning scheme. Furthermore, its positioning would play significant traffic impact to the local area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do we have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Campbell, there was no opposition, so you don't get to close. Councillors, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley. Councillor Campbell's not voting, councillor Howe. No, councillor Campbell, and I'll put my hand up too, and myself, I declare the motion carried. Thank you, councillors. We now move.
Mr Mayor, can I call for a recess, please?
Yep, you certainly can. Councillors, we're going to take a ten-minute recess and we'll resume at seven fifty. Thank you, councillors, and IT, if you could take care of that for us, thank you.
And thank you for rejoining us with the council meeting. We've got all councillors back and present in the room and councillor Gibson's joined us back online, thanks to the gallery for hanging around, most of whom have, and for those online for rejoining us. We now move on to item 10, which is the corporate items for decision. There's one item in this section, the first item is item 10.1, authorisation of council offices under the Planning and Environmental Act 1987, commencing on page 192 of the agenda. And councillor Morgan is moving and councillor Lund is seconding. Bear with me councillors, I've got to find my little page, otherwise I'm writing on that note. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
No, it's councillor Lund, did you wish to speak?
Procedural, no need to speak.
Yep, no worries. Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Yep, councillor Pugsley.
Through you, Mr Chair. It's in our interests, in the council's interest to move this item. It just allows the relevant appointed staff to fulfil their duties, thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have any other speakers? No, then we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, I thought the hand was half up, half down, councillor Howe, keep them up councillors, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell, thank you, and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you councillors. And just to let you know to the community and to councillors, that means we are now only one planner short in the planning department, which I'm told is the first time in 14 years we've been at that stage. So we expect amazing things coming out of our planning department from now on. Councillors, we now move on to urgent business and I've been advised that councillor Campbell, you have some urgent business to raise. And I also note, I'm going to get some advice here, through you, Mr CEO, do I need to vacate the chair now or after the vote to admit it as urgent business?
Just in terms of seeing the motion, I think if you just put that up, what the wording actually is, have you got that there team? So given that mentions that invitation to the mayor in the, obviously the item, I think it would be best if you vacate the chair.
That's okay, I will therefore hand over to the deputy mayor councillor Gibson and let her handle the meeting and I will vacate, thank you councillors.
Just on mute there, Madam Chair.
If I have mute myself, I might like that button. Okay councillors, now before we can actually go into this motion, we have to decide whether this is, this is urgent or not, do I have a mover to declare that it is urgent? Councillor Pugsley, okay, bear with me, do I have a second of this motion? Councillor Campbell, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter? Okay, councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak to, and it's not to, you have to be very careful here, this is just why it is urgent and has to be addressed tonight, do you wish to speak?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. That council admits in accordance with the governance rules 2023 clause 20, the following items of business as it cannot be reasonably or conveniently deferred until the next council meeting. Tareggen City Band Tour of Remembrance Invitation to the Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, councillor Campbell, do you wish to speak or reserve?
Reserve, thank you.
No worries, councillor Potter, do you wish to speak?
Yes please, Deputy Chair. Oh, go, okay. I'd like to address the proposal regarding the mayor's attendance on the trip around France, and more specifically to highlight why...
Can I just stop you for a second please? This is only why it cannot be heard tonight, not about the actual motion, it's just, is this urgent or not? That's what we're addressing first. Sorry if you were going to speak that way, it didn't sound like that, so I'll start the three minutes again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we all know, urgent business is defined as an issue that has arisen since the distribution of the agenda, requiring immediate attention. This ensures that council business can be conducted in an orderly and transparent manner, allowing adequate time for proper consideration and informed decision making. Additionally, urgent business applies only to matters that cannot reasonably or conveniently be deferred until the next council meeting. However, in this incident, the proposal from the Tareggen Band has been known to council since February 7, 2025, when their letter was received and today an email to all councillors was received, and once again, it was not indicated that it was an urgent decision that was needed. There's been ample opportunity to include this matter in prior agenda, allowing for appropriate discussion and planning. Furthermore, when meeting with the band leaders, they did not indicate that this matter was of urgency. If this item were delayed to the April meeting, they would still leave six weeks before the planned trip, more than adequate time for proper consideration and planning. Council's procedures exist to ensure that all matters are dealt with in a structured and responsible way, allowing this to be pushed through under the guise of urgency undermines that integrity of our decision making processes. So while I recognise the significance of what we're being asked, I have to uphold the principles of good governance, and that means this is not defined as an urgent matter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potter. Do I have a speaker who wishes to speak to why this is urgent? Councillor Pugsley, you're the mover, so you don't get to speak. Okay. Okay, do I have a speaker against? Councillor Howe?
Yeah, actually 100% agree with councillor Potter on this. At the very least, it was brought to councillor's attention on Tuesday night, which was two days before the release of the agenda, and if you do look in our governance rules, the definition of urgent business is something that arises after the distribution of the agenda, meeting agenda. So I think it'd be important if we could push this back to the April meeting for a couple of reasons. First one is we can get, we have enough time to get a report from the officers, so we can have a good look at how it does, does it align with our company plan, places to budget, all the stuff that we like to know when we're making a decision, and what our community wants to know as well. And just as importantly, what does our community think about this?
We've just got to go on why it is or isn't urgent.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if it's not, it'd be more important to push it back to the meeting, so the community have a chance to respond to it, that's all. I'm not sure whether that crosses, if that's a grey area or not, sorry, Madam Chair.
That's okay. You wish to say any more or not?
No, no, I'll sit on that and see how we go, thank you.
No worries, okay, thank you very much. Do I have another person who wishes to speak to the motion? Against the motion? Anybody else wish to speak? No. Councillor Campbell, are you reserved?
Okay, the reason why we've brought this tonight is they've got to start organising accommodation and planning for the trip, and also making appointments with these people to see if the mayor is going to be there or not, to include him in a lot of the meetings and also the marches.
No worries, thank you. Since we have had opposition, councillor Pugsley, you can close.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Since this has been brought to, it has become an urgent matter, as my colleague councillor Campbell has stated. With, if the mayor, the mayor going on the band, it elevates it to another standard, which actually means that potentially that the band and the mayor can have meetings with Queen Mary.
Just got to relate to...
Oh, my apologies, I got caught up, sorry.
Okay.
All right, I think I'll close there, thank you.
No worries, thank you very much, okay. Since we've had speakers, all those in favour to have this as urgent business? Councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself against councillor Howe, councillor Lund, councillor Morgan, you hide behind each other, sorry, and that's it, got it, and councillor Potter, it's a tied vote, so I will, I will do the casting vote in favour to have this as urgent business. Okay, so we will put the actual motion before, that will come up now. Councillor Campbell, are you moving this motion?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, yes. Do I need to read it?
Not yet. Now, do I have a second of for this urgent business motion please? Councillor Barnes, do I have any opposition? Councillor Potter, okay. Councillor Campbell, do you wish to speak?
So this is where I read out the motion, okay. I, councillor Joanne Campbell, move that council allocate nine and a half thousand dollars for the mayor to travel overseas to attend the Tareggen City Bands Tour of Remembrance in United Kingdom, Belgium, Paris and Denmark from June the 11th to the 25th of June 2025. Also to approve the mayor to travel with the official mayoral chains from the former city of Tareggen, and note that the costs associated with the mayor attending the Tareggen City Bands Tour of Remembrance will be allocated from unallocated cash reserves.
Okay, now, but do you wish to speak anymore to why you're moving this motion?
I do, Madam Deputy Mayor, but sorry, I had a list here. The screen went dead. Yes, so it's, I just think it'd be a great thing, be a good promotion, also they'll be playing to Queen Mary of Denmark, which is an Australian, and hopefully they'll be able to encourage her to come to Latrobe City. It's no guarantees, but the more we promote our area everywhere in the world, the better. Also, there's, they're going to a place in England, in northern England, meeting with mayors of what was home to the coal industry. They are happy to discuss and show what works and what doesn't work with the renewables and with, since their industries have closed down. In the entire trip, they'll only have one free day, so they'll be marching at the Champs de Soleil, a lot of areas where the band has been invited that a lot of other bands haven't. And also, they are also sending Indigenous and disabled members and also members from the LBTQI community, which is very inclusive, and someone has donated a lot of money for these individuals that can't afford to go. So I think it's a good thing to show that we, as a council, are showing support of our whole community, not just part of the community.
Thank you councillor Campbell. Councillor Barnes, do you wish to speak or reserve, please?
No, I think that was pretty loud and clear, that was pretty good.
No worries, thank you. Councillor Potter, do you wish to speak?
Yes please, Madam Deputy Mayor. Sorry, so it's important to recognise the commitment and dedication of the band members. Over the past 18 months, they've tirelessly fundraised through activities such as sausage sizzles to ensure that all their members had the opportunity to participate. They've each paid their own way, demonstrating a strong personal commitment to representing our community abroad. Given this, I do have to ask, is it not only fair that our mayor should not be expected to do the same thing and pay his own way? Additionally, it remains unclear what tangible benefits the mayor's attendance will bring to the wider Latrobe City community. While the band members have been able to establish professional and social connections, it's been shown that these have not translated into significant or lasting economic benefits for our region. The mayor previously attended a similar trip with the band 10 years ago, yet there was no identified economic impact from his participation. It's also worth noting that other mayors have not been invited to accompany the band on their other overseas trips. And this raises questions about why this request is being made now, and whether this is necessary or justified use of ratepayers' funds. If the mayor believes this trip is a valuable opportunity, then he should, like the other band members, fund his participation. Furthermore, the six, sorry, the nine and a half thousand dollars request does not account for the additional costs, including food, incidentals and other expenses, meaning the actual cost to the ratepayer could be even higher. Without a full and detailed report, we cannot accurately assess the total funding that will be an impact of this trip. The mayor has also not provided any formal plan outlining how he intends to foster economic relationships while he's away. Simply meeting with other mayors and attending dinners does not justify such a significant expenditure. For these reasons, I think we really need to ensure that we're spending ratepayers' funds in a responsible manner that delivers real benefits for the broader Latrobe City community. Transparency and accountability are key, and approving this request without a full understanding of its value would be premature. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potter. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Against the motion? Councillor Howe?
Sorry, I think councillor Pugsley wanted to speak for the motion, Madam Chair, she needs a big, one of those big hands, you'd get at the basketball, I think.
Yeah, just do it forward a bit, so people can see.
Like that?
Yeah, that's cool, that works.
Thank you, thank you, through you, Madam, well, sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor. I believe that this tour is different than any previous one that might have been. There are potential economic conversations that can be had with, through previous councils that have transitioned through coal, and what they have done and how they have come out through, through it. There is also an opportunity, I believe, for our mayor to be able to promote our local area and our products, and there is a potential meeting with Queen Mary on the books, and which would be great if the visit was reciprocated. That would be an incredible privilege for our local community to have. I do believe that the mayor is intending on taking some of our local products to promote, non-perishable products, and this will also further our economic growth in our region. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak now?
Yeah, if I can, thanks, Madam Chair. Councillors, we've just spent the last four or five weeks working on our budget, we've gone through every expense item on that budget in an effort to cut costs wherever possible. Now we're here tonight discussing a proposal to send our mayor on a European vacation at a cost of nearly $10,000, charging it back to the ratepayer. This trip is said to be promote goodwill and strengthen community ties, which is, which is great, but it offers no economic benefit to our city whatsoever. This doesn't align to our council plan, to our transition plan, or to the expectations that our community has of us. It simply doesn't pass the pub test, at least not any pub that I've been to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you councillor Howe. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Against the motion? Anybody else? Well, yep, got that. Thank you councillor Morgan.
So I wish to speak against this motion. In doing so, I do wish to say I strongly support us as Latrobe City highlighting the wonderful creative and educational opportunities that we have, and doing so on an international level. The Tareggen City Band are a wonderful asset in our community who do a lot, and I think it's a fabulous idea to support them. However, I don't think this is how we do so. I also note that it's incredibly important for us to foster connection on an international scale between our municipality and others abroad, international relations, incredibly important. But again, I don't think this motion does that in a responsible or reasonable way. Um, as per the correspondence we've received from Torreagan City Band and the presentation that they gave, or the highlights I received from it, um, early last week, well before this agenda was released, um, the band requested that council seek, uh, they requested funding from the council of twenty thousand dollars to go towards the cost of the trip to help, um, I believe they said, certain disadvantaged individuals to go on the trip. Um, and that is a wonderful initiative and idea to support people who would not traditionally be able to attend a very special occasion like this. Um, and also sought to, um, sought council's permission to have the mayor attend the trip and take part in the formal meetings and discussions with dignitaries. Sounds like a fabulous idea. I'm not quite sure how we went from those requests, however, to the motion that is in front of us now to allocate funding to the mayor to attend the overseas trip. Um, nothing about, um, supporting the band to help members of the band themselves to ensure that they can play and show off everything that they do. Um, and there is nothing about that in this motion, and we are now funding the mayor, who I don't think quite fits into that disadvantaged, um, category that they're seeking funding for. It doesn't, I believe, as councillor Howe mentioned, it doesn't pass the pub test for me, and I'm concerned that we are paying for a cheeky European vacay, and I'm, I'm not quite on board with that. But I do think we should be supporting, um, the Torreagan City Band to facilitate this in whatever ways we can. And I would gladly give my permission to have the mayor attend the trip, but I'm not happy with spending nine thousand five hundred dollars on it for him to attend. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Do I have any other councillor wish to speak? Because I think nearly everyone's spoken. Sorry? All right. Which one have I got? Have I got councillor Pugsley or have I got councillor, um, Campbell?
Madam Mayor, we've both got our hands up, I haven't spoken yet. Um, and, um, I believe councillor Pugsley would also like to speak, but has already spoken, so it's closed or, or, sorry, I lost track.
Um, I have, um, through, through you, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions, please.
Yes, okay.
Um, all right, so the first question is, is that, um, how, how do we normally fund events that has tourism?
Um, Mr CEO, through you, can that be answered, please?
Um, so in, in terms of general things that we fund in terms of tourism, or more specifically these sorts of, um, tours where the mayor or the CEO, for example, has been overseas, can I just clarify the question maybe, it might help me?
Um, I think that tourism in general.
All right, so i- in terms of our tourism activities in general, we have a visitor services team, uh, we have events that we might fund, a promotion, sorry, that we might fund locally to, to try and encourage people to visit Latrobe City. So there's a range of funds in our budget that support those more direct activities in that respect. So each year in the budget is an allocation, um, for staffing costs and also promotion and activities. There's, in addition to that, that's probably not tourism, but it's through our Tourism Events and Major Advisory Committee, and I always get that acronym wrong, TAMIAC, Tourism and Major Events Advisory Committee, the other way around. Um, there's proposals that come forward to that committee that are considered by council, by the committee, sorry, and then those, the things that they consider are then either recommended or not. When they're recommended to council, there's a further report for council then to endorse those sorts of activities. So they're probably some of the primary initiatives.
Thank you. Was that, was that all councillor Pugsley?
Uh, I did have a second question, uh, through you, Madam.
supplementary, yeah?
Yes. Um, and how does having a mayor attending the tour help?
Uh, in, in terms of.
CEO, can you answer that one too, please?
Yep, sorry, Madam Chair, overstepping, net, for being invited. Um, so i- in past practice, where we've had, uh, the, these sorts of delegations overseas or requests for tours, uh, for example, most of the delegations that I've been part of in the last six years have related to the hydrogen energy supply chain project, um, and they were requests that came from the, either the entities who are delivering those projects, and they asked that council attend and the mayor particularly. One was to speak at a forum, for example, around, uh, the level of council support for the project and the social licence was my recollection, primarily around that. It's one that councillor Howe attended as deputy mayor. Uh, so that request came through, I think it might have been J Power who's organising that particular, who's, who are primarily, one of the primary funding partners or deliverers of that hydrogen project, so they requested that we attend. Uh, and that was in relation, probably more economic activity and was supported by council. More recently last year, council had a similar request for, for that one. I think in terms of the, the last, uh, one in my ten years at Latrobe was this, this same similar activity in 2015 where council was requested by, again, the band to attend, for the mayor to attend, and I think it was the hundred year celebration that they attended. Um, and so it was considered by council, uh, that one was through a council report, so slightly different mechanism than an urgent business item, and, uh, council supported that. So the, the sort of things council typically looks at, those, in my experience, have primarily been related to the economic benefits in the most recent tours. Uh, the prior one, uh, was more about the recognition of their event and, uh, importance of the mayor attending at that point in time in 2015, so I hope that helps answer the question in some way.
Does that answer your questions, please, councillor Pugsley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
No worries, sorry, councillor Lund, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, I'm speaking against. So first of all, I want to voice my opposition to the urgent business item being proposed. Um, I think there's been ample opportunity for it to come in, um, through the normal processes. We are being asked to make a decision without the fullness of the information required to do that. Um, that is alarming to me. Uh, while I fully support and honour, um, the Torreagan City Band's, um, intention to go overseas for the Tour of Remembrance and, um, for honouring our community's history, I, I'm deeply disturbed that we now see a notice of motion before us to fund the mayor to attend. I'm supportive of the mayor attending on his, um, at his own costs, um, and if he feels that that is a good use of his time, um, you know, I, I'm fully supportive of that. But I'm not supportive of the proposal in front of us. Um, it doesn't align with our community plan or our priorities. Um, and it shifts the focus from what we should be doing. We need to be focusing on delivering outcomes for our community in Latrobe. It's not part of our financial remit to support, um, adventures like this. Um, we're here to deliver essential services. We're here, uh, to support infrastructure, we're, um, sorry, uh, I'll start again, we're here to deliver essential services and infrastructure to our community. We're here to respond to those community concerns like we have heard tonight, um, and address them in a really transparent, thoughtful, um, and informed way. Um, what we're being asked to do now is not, in, does not meet any of those things, in my humble opinion. Um, I'm deeply concerned that ten years ago, uh, when our mayor was mayor, that the same proposal was put up for the same trip, and in that ten years, we haven't seen anything like it from that band. Um, and I'm not quite sure why. And I feel like the benefit of more fulsome information, um, and a full report would certainly go a long way to relieve or at least address some of those concerns that are being raised today, um, by my colleagues. My other concern is, and I guess this is coming back to that pub test that a number of my colleagues have spoken to today, is it, I don't feel it's either ethical or financially responsible. And that, to my core, makes me really disturbed that this is even on, on the agenda. So I will leave it at that because I need to. Um, um, and, uh, thank you for the respectful debate that we have had on this, and I will move forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Lund. Uh, do I have any other councillors who haven't spoken? I think we've, councillor Barnes, do you wish to speak?
I would, thank you. Um, what I would like to say, though, um, about all this, at the moment, you know, change is good, so we've got a lot of multicultural people around here at the moment. Going overseas and doing different things over there can bring a, a lot of stuff back this way, which one day you may make a lot of money out of it. So I always think something like this may happen this year, but you don't just do it a year by year, you do it, you make it an ongoing thing because it's going to bring people into Latrobe Valley, because Latrobe Valley doesn't get very good promotions and stuff like that for travel and all sorts of stuff. So we need to get out there a little bit more, make it a bit more attractive to bring people here, to actually make them see what we've got around, because when you look at the tally, or you'll do this or do that, you might see lakes or Wilson's promity, uh, prom, uh, Wilson's, um, down on the beach anyway, um, down the prom down there, but you don't ever see anything about Latrobe Valley. So by getting this out there a bit and taking it overseas, a lot of people that are living in Australia, they might actually get behind us and come up to Latrobe Valley and say, oh, this is a great spot, you know, we need to get it out there a bit more. That's it.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. We have had opposition, so councillor Campbell, do you wish to close?
Through you, Miss, um, Madam Deputy Mayor? No, thank you.
No worries, thank you. Okay. I, I would love to be able to speak, but it's not normal to speak from the chair, um, so I won't speak on Queen Mary Renewables or Tamiac, I, I won't speak. Um, but since we've had speakers, I'll put the motion to the vote. Who, who's voting for the motion, please? Raise your hands. Okay, councillor Campbell, councillor, thank you, councillor Pugsley, councillor Barnes and myself, against. Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, against, that's a tied vote, and I will have to make a, um, deciding casting vote, and I'll vote in favour only for the reasons I can't speak to. Okay, so I declare the motion carried. Can we get the mayor back in, please?
Definitely.
Has he got a walkabout? Nope, there we go. There you go, councillor Harriman.
Thanks, Deputy Madam Deputy Mayor, sorry, I was just getting the hundreds or ten thousand steps in up and down and admiring the beautiful facility we have here. Uh, councillors, I take it, we're now on to item twelve point one? Let me find where we are. Uh, two items in this section, the first item, twelve point one, further options for the future council meeting location, commencing on page two hundred and six of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Morgan moving, councillor Lund seconding. Councillors, do I have any opposition? No, councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Um, yes, just briefly, um, I'm very happy to support, um, accepting the, or noting the report, um, and I would like to thank the council officers for their thorough work exploring the alternate council meeting venues. Um, and I also want to note and express my appreciation for the inclusion of Monash Hall in Yawar North and exploring that as an alternate option as well. Um, and, you know, I just think it's important that we explore venues across our whole municipality, um, and Yawar North is often missed out, so very happy that that was given a look in, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Councillor Lund, would you like to speak or reserve?
Uh, just briefly, um, I also want to acknowledge the officers for the bodies of work that they do to support us, to do our good work here at this table and exploring all the options, um, to ensure that we can, um, take these meetings as a bit of a roadshow across community to ensure accessibility. So thank you for exploring all the options, and I acknowledge, uh, with gratitude, your extremely hard work on all the things that you do for us.
Thank you, councillor Lund. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Councillor Gibson, I note your hand up for a speak for the motion?
Uh, yes, please. Look, I, I would just like to say thank you, because I think this was on the, the back of a, a motion I put forward to try and be inclusive for our whole community, bearing in mind at the moment, we cannot use, um, headquarters as a, a place, and I was trying to have it so we can actually do it across the municipality, not in one spot, uh, one spot, and also to, to look at whether we can or can't take it out to the smaller communities, because they, they do miss out on quite a bit. So I do, I do thank, um, everyone for supporting that in the first place, and also the time and effort taken to actually explore the options, so thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Morgan, we had no speakers against, so you don't get to close. Councillors, we've had speakers, so I'll now put the item to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. We move on to the next item, twelve point two, Transition Plan Performance Report, commencing on page two hundred and eleven of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Pugsley, councillors, do I have a second? Councillor Morgan, uh, bear with me, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan. Uh, councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Chair.
Okay, councillor Morgan, would you like to speak or reserve?
Oh, reserve.
Reserve, no. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Morgan, we're back to you, speaker, would you like to speak?
I will pass on that, thank you.
Pass, no worries. Councillors, even though we haven't had any speakers, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously as well. Councillors, that brings us to items for tabling, item fourteen. Uh, there are two items in this section, the first is item fourteen point one, an update on the Audit and Risk Committee Charter, commencing on page two fifty-three of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Campbell? Do I have a second? Councillor, I was going to say Potter, and it is councillor Potter, sorry, councillor Potter, yeah, sorry, struggling tonight. Um, councillor Campbell, would you like to speak?
Through you, Mr Mayor, no, thank you.
No, okay, spoke, councillor Potter, would you like to speak or reserve?
Uh, reserve, please.
Reserve, no worries. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Do I have any councillor wish to speak for the motion? Against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Potter, we're back to you.
Um, no, thank you, Mr Mayor.
No worries, thank you, councillors. Uh, we'll put that motion to the vote. All those councillors in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. Councillors, that brings us to item fourteen point two on the agenda, tabling of the Audit and Risk Committee Biannual Report and Annual Self-Assessment, commencing on page two seventy-three of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? I've got councillor Campbell moving, councillor Potter seconding. Councillor Campbell, did you wish to speak?
Through you, Mr Mayor, no.
Okay, councillor Potter, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Do I have a councillor wish to speak for the motion? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Potter, you didn't reserve, did you? No, that's right, councillors, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself, I declare that motion carried unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item fifteen, which is a meeting closed to the public to consider confidential information under section sixty-six two A of the Local Government Act twenty twenty. Councillors, do I have a motion to close the meeting? Councillor Lund, do I have a second? Councillor Morgan, do I have any opposition? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we'll put that to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Morgan, councillor Lund, councillor Howe, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes, councillor Pugsley, councillor Campbell and myself. I declare that motion carried. Councillors, I'd just like to say before we shut, thank you to those members of our gallery who have stayed with us through the whole meeting and also to those following us online. Thank you very much. And this is where we say adieu, good night. And we shall see you at our next meeting in the last, oh, the fourth, sorry, the fourth Saturday of April. Thank you very much for joining us. Fourth, oh dear. Fourth, sorry. Fourth Saturday, we will see you at the Trelgans Farmers Market. The fourth Monday, which has just been, we shall see you at the council meeting, 6 o'clock. And I believe we're in Maui next month, Mr CEO. Just putting the pressure on you? Yes, we are. Thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming.